Tonight, it's Tuesday, November 18th, and I will be calling this meeting of the Southgate City Planning Commission to order at 6:32 PM. Jimmy, can you please lead us in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you. Can I please get a roll call?
Commissioner Castaneda?
Present.
Commissioner Osayeta?
Present.
Commissioner Valenzuela?
Vice Chair Prieto?
Present.
Your person is green.
Present.
I have your special projects coordinator certify that a true and correct copy of the foregoing meeting agenda was properly posted on November 13, 72 hours prior, excuse me, to the scheduled meeting as required by law pursuant to Government Code Section 54952.3. Disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by the planning commission is $125 per meeting.
Onto consent calendar, the first items are the planning commission meeting minutes. Can we just put them all together in the same motion? Can I get a motion from one of my colleagues to approve the minutes?
I can make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 21st and November 4th.
Thank you.
I second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Commissioner Osayeta?
Yes.
Commissioner, vice chairperson Prieto?
Yes.
And chairperson Reese?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Onto public hearings. Who would lead us into that?
Okay, I can open it up. And just to let you know, I did receive a text message from Commissioner Valenzuela. She mentioned she's on her way, so if she gets here early enough, she may be able to participate. The item before you is item 8A, and I know that we have one commissioner, Vice Chair Prieto, who lives pretty close to this project site, so it would be appropriate for you to recuse.
To recuse myself?
Yeah.
From voting because I live within 500 feet of this location.
Right, but also to recuse yourself from the council chambers.
We'll make sure to get you when we're done. Thank you.
So the good thing is, we still have a quorum with the three commissioners.
Great.
Okay. So we also have a PowerPoint presentation, and we'll get that up and loaded for you here. But item 8A is a public hearing. It's for a conditional use permit, CUP number 25-03 for a medical and dental office facility with urgent care services within an existing commercial building at 4433 and 4437 Tweedy Boulevard and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Tonight, we have associate planner Joshua Valdez, he'll give a presentation, and you're welcome to ask any questions after he makes his presentation.
Thank you, John. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joshua Valdez, Associate Planner for the City of Southgate Planning Division. Tonight, I'm here to present to you conditional use permit 25-03 to establish a medical dental and medical and dental office facility with urgent care services at 4433 and 4437 Tweedy Boulevard. He hasn't put in the thing. There we go. Okay, sorry about that. A quick overview of the project details. The project is located again at 4433 and 4437 Tweedy Boulevard. The project owner who is here is Jack Azad, and the applicant applying for the CUP on behalf of Mr. Azad is Ben Burakim. The project site is located within the Tweedy Boulevard's specific plan, specifically the Tweedy mixed-use two-zone, TMU2, and has a general plan designation of Tweedy Corridor, SubArea 3. The project lot size is 11,411 square feet or approximately 0.26 acres. This is an aerial image of the project site showing the, well, this is an aerial image showing the project site in red. And the adjacent area to the north, the zoning is still TMU2 and is currently being used as a city parking lot. To the east, the zone is TMU1 and is being used as a service business. To the south, the zone is TMU2 and is currently developed with medical and dental services. Whereas to the west, the zone is TMU2 and is currently developed with small commercial convenience, as a small commercial convenience center. This is a screenshot of the city's, of the Tweedy Boulevard's specific plan zoning map. The site project is outlined in yellow. The hot pink represents parcels in the TMU2 zone, whereas the light pink represents parcels in the TMU1 zone. The yellow and blue colors represent the neighborhood low and civic zone respectively. The project, the project consists of an adaptive reuse of an existing building for medical and dental offices with urgent care facility services and a pharmacy. The building is predominantly built to the property line, but as part of the tenant improvement, the applicant is proposing to add landscaping to the area surrounding the building, creating a buffer zone between public and private areas. Ultimately, 70% of the building will be on, be at the property line, whereas the remaining 30% will be set back at least four feet. Consisting with the TMU2 development standards, the applicant is also proposing a mural on the west side of the building that will be presented to planning commission at a later So this is the site plan, and the tenant composition consists of approximately 2,655 square feet of dental space, an approximate 531 square foot pharmacy, and an approximately 371 square foot clinic and urgent care facility. The dental office hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays. The urgent care facility will be open 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, seven days a week, and then the pharmacy will be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and closed on the weekends. This is a floor plan showing the pharmacy, the dental facility, and the medical facilities and their proposed uses for each space within. So if you imagined yourself driving down Bryson Avenue heading towards Tweedy, these would, this would be your view. This is the north elevation visible from the city parking lot at the rear of the property. So as you're still driving down Bryson, this would be your view at the stop sign there on the right-hand side. So these are the east elevations from Bryson Avenue. When you turn west or make a right onto Tweedy from Bryson, this would be your view. These are the south elevations, so this would be visible from Tweedy Boulevard. And as you're passing the site, driving westbound, this would be your rearview image. This is the west elevation. The mural depicted here is not the final product. The applicant and staff are still in discussions as to what would be an appropriate mural for this site, which will be presented to planning commission at a later date. So we're going to go through some current site photos. So this is the south-facing from the alley. This is west-facing from the intersection of Tweedy Boulevard and Bryson Avenue. North-facing from Tweedy Boulevard, so this is how the site currently looks from Tweedy. And then northeast-facing from Tweedy Boulevard. So right there where you see that blank wall is where the mural is being proposed. These are a couple of perspectives that were provided by the applicant of the finished product and how it would look. Based on the proposed business activities, staff has determined that the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for medical services, clinic, and urgent care/urgent care, and medical services, medical, dental, and holistic land use types, with the pharmacy component being classified as retail services general, which is permitted by right according to the Tweedy Boulevard's specific plan table 4-2. Pursuant to Southgate Municipal Code 11.52.030, before a CUP may be granted, the planning commission shall make the findings that are listed in the bullets A, B, and C. So for the first one, the proposed project is consistent with and will not adversely affect the intent and purpose of Title 11, the Tweedy Boulevard's specific plan, or the city's general plan, as the proposed land uses are listed as highly desirable in the list, in the city's general plan. Second, the design and development of the land use and conditions of this CUP are compatible with the existing and future land uses of the applicable zone, as the proposed project meets all the development standards listed for the TMU2, which will be discussed in the next slide. Lastly, the approval of the CUP would not result in detrimental impacts to adjacent properties or to the character of, character or function in the neighborhood, as there's already existing, as the project is not introducing new land use types, there's already an existing medical and dental services at the south of this project site. So these are the development standards for parcels located within the TMU2 zone. The middle column here lists the standards, the development standards as, as listed, whereas the column on the far right shows what the applicant is proposing in terms of this development project. As shown, the proposed development meets the development requirements of the TMU2 zone. There is a potential concern over parking, as the applicant is maintaining the existing parking spaces. However, the project is located within the Tweedy Mile, which allows for the Park Once Program. The Park Once Program, the Park Once Program allows for commercial businesses to offset their needs for parking by utilizing the existing public parking stock. Within 0.15 miles of the project site, there are five public parking spaces. Additionally, Assembly Bill 2097 allows for, well, limits the city's ability to impose minimum parking requirements on projects within half a mile of a high-quality transit stop. There is a, there is this type of transit stop at Tweedy and Alexander, as depicted by the green circle on the screenshot. These are a few conditions of approval that staff believes will ensure that the site is adequately maintained and that each component is reviewed by the appropriate entities. As discussed and shown, the project consists of adaptive reuse of an existing building with no proposed expansion. As such, under the California Environmental Quality Act, staff finds the project to be exempt under Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 and Class 32 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15332 of the CEQA guidelines. Staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project is in accordance with CEQA that, wait, sorry. Staff recommends that the planning commission find that in accordance with CEQA, this project qualifies for a categorical exemption under CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities, and Class 32 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15332 Infill Development, and there, and is thereby exempt from CEQA, and in that, the project consists only of improvements to an existing structure with no expansions being proposed, and the project meets all requirements to qualify for a Class 1 and Class 32 exemption. And staff recommends that planning commission adopt Resolution Number 2025-11, approving CUP Number 25-3. That concludes my presentation. My presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Joshua.
And just for the record, I just want to mention that Commissioner Valenzuela joined us during the presentation, so she's present.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on the project? If you can come up to the podium and just press the button to turn green.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for all their help. I think they've done a great job in presenting our project and their findings. We're here if you have any questions for us, both the architects and the owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we open it up to public comment? Let's do that. Any public comment? No? Seeing on any written email comments?
There was a written one by Mario Dominguez Jr. He said, "For a long time, I have wanted and wished for our city to have its own LA County clinic within our city limits. This seems to be an answer to my hopes. I would like to know, will this urgent care facility offer the same type of services that a typical LA County-owned and-run clinic would give to residents? Could the applicant please give us a detailed list of the types of services they will be providing, offering to us?" He says, "I have LA Care as my insurance provider. Will this facility accept people that have LA Care? I love that the applicants will be providing some greenery to the, to their building/location." He says, "Excellent job with that. I ask the applicant to please go forward and give us art by having a mural painted on the west side of the building. Our city needs art." That was Mario Dominguez Jr.
And I believe there's another one there from?
The LAUSD one?
Yes, LAUSD. I can maybe read the first part of it and maybe summarize the ending.
Okay, sounds good. I don't know if my colleagues need some time to read it as well.
Okay, I guess for the benefit of the public, I'll go ahead and read most of it and summarize the rest. So it's a letter from LAUSD, it was received by staff today, this afternoon. It's about three pages, and it reads, "Presented below, our comments submitted on behalf of the Los Angeles Unified School District, LA Unified or District, on the 4433 to 4437 Tweedy Boulevard project. The project site is across the street from Bryson Elementary School with 737 students. The project would establish a medical and dental office facility and full remodel. District requests that our schools, our school students be recognized as sensitive receptors and that the project specifically address potential impacts. Specific areas of concern where the project's construction are, where the project's construction and operation would have a significant effect on the district's school include air quality, noise, and transportation/traffic, including pedestrian safety. The district is concerned about the potential negative impacts of the project on our students, their parents/guardians, and staff. Based on the location of the proposed development, it is our opinion that environmental impacts on the surrounding area will likely occur. Since the project may impact LA Unified Schools, recommended measures designed to help reduce or eliminate potential impacts are included in this response." And so the rest of the letter just identifies, indicates, you know, being able to work with LAUSD, that the applicant should coordinate any construction activities with LAUSD. There are concerns about air quality, noise, traffic and transportation, and pedestrian safety. Most of these are covered under, I guess, best management practices during the construction period. And that's really a summary of the, of the letter.
Thank you.
For the record, the hard copy of the letter was delivered to each commissioners and also emailed before the meeting.
Thank you. And has the applicant received the letter as well, or will they?
No, it was received later this day. I can hand them a copy of this in case you want to see it.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments?
I do have a, I have a question maybe for staff. In regards to these types of projects and their proximity to schools or other established businesses, do we take a proactive approach to contact the schools directly as a city staff to maybe have conversations to help maybe mitigate whatever concerns they may have ahead of time?
Well, they are within the radius of the school. We send out notices to, from properties within 1,000 feet of the subject property, so they were able to get the notice and be able to respond, so they were able to prepare that letter.
I guess my, my comments more prior to those notices going out, do we maybe, is that something, because I, it's come up on a few other projects where there are some established entities in the area, do we contact them? I know we can send out the notice for them to give comment, but I think in this case, you know, maybe some of these concerns could have been maybe addressed prior to the meeting today?
A lot of that depends on whether or not it's a CEQA project. If it's not exempt from CEQA, then there's much more advanced notices that need to go out to the schools and the other government entities in the area. For a city project like this, the city takes the lead. As, as John mentioned, a lot of what the, the things that the school district is pointing out are things that are typically covered under best practices of any construction, construction situation.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that this is really a renovation of a, the existing building. There's an existing building there that they're looking to reuse. They're looking to do modifications to the building, and that's why under CEQA, we have this under Class 1 as an existing facility, existing building, and also Class 32, which is for infill development projects. That's why we determined it to be categorically exempt.
The grading or possible grading, is it, are the concerns related to the greenery that's going to be added on, to the property? Like, is that going to cost a lot of excavation, or?
Grading?
I couldn't, well, the LAUSD mentions that if there's any grading, or, and it cites Rule 403 for fugitive dust control.
So I think, because it is a reuse of the building, I mean, they'll, they'll do some modifications to the exterior. In terms of grading, I don't believe that was proposed on there. They may do improvements to the back lot, but in terms of any excavation, other than maybe, you know, upgrading the plumbing and, you know, sewer, that might, that might occur.
That may be the extent.
But in terms of extensive grading to a site, it's really, it's a, it's a small site and infill, in a developed area. So other than, you know, refurbishing or, you know, redoing the, what's already existing, and possibly maybe repaving the, that parking lot, there isn't going to be extensive grading.
Okay. I, I wasn't sure if that was already set, the, the repaving of the parking lot, or if that was already planned. My, my questions have to do with just the, the parking. I know there's parking north of the property, and I have to say, I, I live nearby, but not within the, the 500 or 300 square feet proximity to trigger my recusal, but, but I do frequent the area a lot, and so I know that that parking lot is used a lot. And so my question is, is whether there are any plans to have at least staff park further away and utilize perhaps the south of Tweedy parking lot? That, because I know that, that my, that that parking lot is hardly utilized.
I, I don't think the city can require that, and in fact, that whole Tweedy Mile area is designed to do just the opposite, to allow, to not require specific parking spaces for each business along the road, with the understanding that that would, that would be duplicative. You have to create too many parking spaces, much more than are necessary, and the thought is that people who are working there or, or shopping there park once and visit multiple, multiple stores. So we're limited on, on the, the parking requirements we can impose for something like this.
Yeah, no, that, that's mostly my concern, especially having an urgent care. I know that those, and with the hours of operation, I can imagine the, you know, the, that more parking would be needed for, for a facility like that, and just considering the use of, of that parking lot, and I'm assuming it's, it's mostly by the, the parents that go to the school north of that site.
I have another question. For, for number 58 under traffic, this is developer should prepare, et cetera, et cetera, and references a traffic memo. Is there a reason why that's not an actual traffic study as opposed to a traffic memo, standby, registered traffic engineer, provided by the developer? Number 58, term number 58.
That's probably, that probably has to do with the, the infill development exception for CEQA. If I'm thinking of the right one, there are three or four conditions that need to be made for that, for that exception to apply. One is, has to do with a determination about traffic effects. It doesn't require a full-blown traffic study like you would in CEQA, but there must be sufficient evidence to show that, that it meets the minimum standards for that exception to apply, and I, I may be wrong, but I'm guessing that's, that is what that, that condition is going to.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that that's our public works as practice. They do require a traffic memo for smaller-sized projects. There's a threshold there that where they would require a full-blown traffic impact analysis if a certain amount of traffic is generated by a project. But for smaller projects such as this, they would require a traffic memo just to make sure that a traffic engineer addresses any potential safety issues or trip generation on nearby intersections.
And that is likely to identify and, and address some of the conditions that the school district pointed out in its letter.
I'm just curious, another question, is it, it references here that if it constitutes like a larger water meter, what, what would constitute a water, a larger water meter in this case?
It would usually be based on a number of fixtures there, you know, how many restrooms they may have, how many, you know, sinks, toilets they may have. And that's determined, I guess, in the building project stage. They would, they would take a look at that and see. For an infill development project, though, you figure that there's already existing utility there. There's already water supply, there's already, you know, sewer capacity. You know, for larger projects, you know, we may require like a will-serv letter from the utility purveyor. This is an infill project, it's on a smaller site, you know, and it's really a reuse of a, a building. So I guess it could be presumed that there is, there already is existing utilities there to serve the site, being that it is, there's an existing building there. They're just going to reconnect to those lines, to the, you know, to the utilities, and so there should already be the capacity to, to handle the, the building. Thank you.
I had another question related to the mural. What, what again distinguishes whether mural approvals go through planning or Parks Commission?
Murals are generally art, and they're, they're not advertising anything that's being sold at the building, so they're distinguished from a, from a business sign. So anything that falls under the, the mural category is something that needs to be run by the U Commissioners for approval.
Okay. Yeah, I'm always confused, because I know there's been at least one that went through the parks.
The, the municipal code is, is sparse when it comes to discussing the, the extent and nature of your review of the murals, but you do have the right to review them, and the, the main distinction is that it's, you do have in some respects more, more leeway because it's, it's not an advertisement, it's public art.
Yeah, because I, yeah, that, that's why I was kind of confused, because I, I know that the Parks Commission has the, the arts. I forget what it's called.
I, I think that may be for, for publicly funded art, though. I could be wrong. I think that's for when the city decides it wants to put up a piece of art versus a private citizen wants to, you know, paint art on his building, but still has it be approved by you folks so that you can make sure there's no, no grounds that the city might object to it.
Got it.
And we do have a condition in there. It's condition number 11 on page number 23. It reads that in the event public art is provided in the form of a mural, sculpture, or other artistic display, an application will be submitted to the community development department. If necessary, the public art shall be reviewed and approved by the city's Arts Commission or Arts Committee through the Art in Public Places Program. through the Art in Public Places Program described in South Gate Municipal Code, Chapter 11.32.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would still like to reiterate my concern related to parking. And it's kind of similar to the previous concern that I brought up with the previous project on Tweedy and just having seen the continued use of parking for non Tweedy Mile purposes. And so I think this is definitely something that, that I'll, I still want to bring up at some point at council, just because I think it does affect, you know, both the businesses and the residents. And I feel like there needs to be some sort of cohesion, if that makes sense, on to, to, to really make it fair for everybody. And so that's kind of my hesitancy, or just perceived, like a perceived issue that I kind of foresee coming. But I don't know if any of my colleagues want to make a motion to find, to accept the staff recommendation or make a separate motion?
Maybe just one quick question to, for the applicant. It's just curious because one of the public comments referenced around accessibility to services that are going to be provided, and a list of the type of services will be provided there. Can you kind of speak a little bit on that? Just curious, I mean.
Good evening. Actually, that was a very interesting comment and.
Can you repeat your name, please?
Jack Azad. I'm actually the owner. And the applicant as well, too. The comments that was mentioned and specifically asking for like LA Care Health Plan or other plans, the type of services that we are going to provide is going to include all the health plans in the LA County. It's going to be LA Care, it's going to be Care First, Molina, Health Net, all major plans. So as far as the age range, it's going to be all from zero to 100, 120 years old. So children, adults are all going to be serviced in that location. That also, not only medical, but also dental. Dental is going to be pediatric and adults.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, and apologies for coming late. And I'm just trying to get clarification as far as LA Unified's letter. I mean, in, in reaction to the fact that these are the concerns that they've established, I think I just want to know the process, if, how they're going to comply with a lot of these concerns that the school has or the residents have.
I'll just modify your statement. The city doesn't, the city isn't charged, the city doesn't necessarily have to comply with demands made by the district. And I don't think the school district is demanding anything. I think that the school district is asking the city to consider a number of conditions. So I'll let, I'll let staff answer, answer the question in that light.
So a lot of the issues brought up in the school district's letter, the way I read it, are related to construction, air quality, noise, traffic. And most of those are dealt with through the best management practices. So there's already standards there to deal with, you know, air quality, you know, with noise that the contractors should know in order to, you know, be able to follow and have the least amount of impasse to adjacent residences.
Any other questions or comments? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I motioned to approve the recommendation by the, by staff?
So it would be finding accordance with CEQA that this project qualifies for categorical exemptions and to adopt our solution number 2025-11 approving CUP number 25-03. So am I removed? Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Osayeta?
Yes.
Commissioner Valenzuela?
Yes, I do, though, want to figure out how they can work with the concerns that Bryson may have in the future about noise and as they come, right? Noise and air quality and all that.
And Vice Chair Prieto stepped down. And then Chairperson Reese?
Yeah, I still have those same concerns about LAUSD and just the parking issues in general, even though I know, I know that they're not mandated. I do still have that as a foreseen concern in the community.
We could have the applicant, or put the applicant in touch with the LAUSD contact person. So in case there are any concerns, they can contact the applicant directly.
That would be great. I mean, it's going to pass. I guess I'll say yes.
Motion passes.
If we can. Yeah, we can invite Vice Chair back into the room.
So we'll have a two-minute break. All right, welcome back, Vice Chair. So on to open session items. We do not have any. So item number 10, comments. Any audience, comments from the audience saying nobody but our director? No. Any city staff comments?
Yeah, just a few. First of all.
Hey, John, sorry, there was a written comment from the public.
Okay, sorry.
So Mario Dominguez Jr. wrote, "I would like to put in a request for either a presentation or an update on the status of the Gateway District specific plan. What is our city doing to help move this endeavor forward and make it a reality for our residents? This is something that is very important to us all that live here in South Gate. I want to make sure that our city is on top of it and doing everything it possibly can to have it turn out right."
I can respond to that. So we are working, we're revisiting the Gateway specific plan, which is right across the street from Azalea. It's the northeast corner of Atlantic and Firestone. We're working with the COG, our Councils of Government, and they do have a grant for us. So they have a consultant also that we're working with. So we're looking to revisit the Gateway specific plan. And at some point, that will make its way over to the Planning Commission when we start the public participation process, you know, the outreaches and also the, you know, the public hearing processes. So we're in the very beginning stages right now of that, just getting to know our consultant and, you know, revisiting that project.
Got it, thank you. So I guess we could go on to city staff comments.
Okay, thank you. A few things. First is, thank you Commissioners for completing the harassment training. So we received all the confirmations and that's sent over to HR, so they have that. Thank you for that. We're at the end of the year also. Next Thursday is Thanksgiving already. So, which means we only have two meetings left. One is going to be December 2nd, and the last one is December 16th. I know we do have one item for December 2nd. It's something that we want to put on there, a presentation for the Planning Commission. I wanted to see if the Commissioners are available for both meetings. Because I know at the end of the year, sometimes it gets tough to, you know, people plan trips and everything. So in terms of attendance, are you planning on?
I won't be available December 16th.
Okay.
I'm available for both.
Yeah, I'm available as well.
So am I.
Okay, that's good to hear. Yeah, so the December 2nd, I know we're going to have. December 16th, we're still a little bit ways for that one. There may be an item on there, but glad to know that all the Commissioners are available for those two meetings. Third, I wanted to mention, we had, I mentioned at the last meeting that Senior Planner Lio was on paternity leave. And we expect him back. He may come back this week, but we do expect him back next week before Thanksgiving for three days. But he did announce to us that he will be leaving us. So he wanted to give him the congratulations. He did take another job, and so he'll be returning with us for next week and then departing after that. So just wanted to, you know, wish him congratulations on that. He's been a lot of help, and he will be with us certainly because he's done a lot of help for us here in South Gate. And with that, I just want to wish the commission and the public happy Thanksgiving, since we won't meet again until December.
Thank you. Any, any Planning Commissioner comments? Jimmy?
I guess my only comment is just kind of reiterate. I know sometimes we stick with like the best practices and saying we're sending things out to, for folks that are within 1,000 feet. But it kind of goes back to my initial comment earlier today. I think in these situations, even though we're not expected to do something, I think in good faith, given that we're stewards to our community, especially good partners with, you know, in some cases, other businesses or LAUSD, it would be helpful to at least reach out and try to either connect developers with businesses that might or entities that might have concerns with their developers so they can at least have a line of communication. I think it's unfortunate to have the developer come out and it's the first time he knows of all these concerns the school district has. Probably you all didn't know either, right? So I think that's just kind of where I'm coming from. It's like, is that like an extra step that we can at least take into consideration? It's not a requirement, I get it. It's not a requirement, but when we have schools and you have young leaders that potentially in their perception is reality, they might perceive this as an impact. It might be good for us to have those conversations among staff and maybe some other community stakeholders that can kind of maybe even create unnecessary issues for businesses that are trying to come into our city. That's just my humble suggestion on that front. Also kind of want to bring up, I know there's a couple emails, you know, since April, I've been trying to, you know, I've always said that I'm, you know, as most of us here sometimes get contacted by community members around concerns or areas that they have maybe identified throughout the city. They might not feel comfortable, and I've voiced my, my concerns on several emails to staff in regards to concerns on RIO that community members have kind of continued to bring to the forefront. You know, I go back and say, the folks don't bring those concerns to staff because they said that they're afraid of retaliation by individuals that are associated with our city. So I said, hey, you know, if I can go ahead and convey that message to staff, then I can go ahead and do that if, if that helps. But there are concerns that continue to have been brought up to, to, you know, all staff, John, Gabriel, some of the other staff, they still haven't been addressed accordingly. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that doesn't fall off our radar so that we can go back and maybe report back to the greater community in regards to like what concerns they have in respect to some of the concerns and safety issues that they've identified on RIO. So I just want to put that out there. I always say I give staff the benefit of the doubt. I always go to staff prior to even having to say it up here on the dais. But when concerns are not being addressed, or the residents don't feel they're being addressed accordingly, then I just feel like I have to bring it up again. So I just want to make sure I bring that up one final time, and hopefully I can connect with staff offline and see if we can at least have a report back on all of the laundry list of concerns that they've identified on RIO.
Thank you. I don't know if you want to address that now or after?
Well, I know the concerns are code enforcement concerns. We brought that over to code enforcement. I mean, they have certain directions they look at. I also know that I guess there's other agencies, you know, federal agencies or state agencies that I guess preempt the city's power. So my understanding is some of those businesses may have certain security measures there. And that's why they're, they're in place. But I would encourage, if there are any people from the public that do have, you know, concerns, to bring that up or to code enforcement, you know, directly, they can contact code enforcement and code enforcement can look into those issues.
Are there ways to have those concerns be kept unanimous or?
They are unanimous if elected.
Got it.
Yeah, that's the thing about code enforcement cases, they're supposed to be anonymous. You report them over to code enforcement and, yeah, it's for protection of the sides.
So in this case, given that that email has already listed quite a few concerns, can that be reported back at the next Planning Commission meeting so that the greater community can hear it straight from staff? I think the biggest concern is they don't want to go directly to staff and they're using us as a mouthpiece. And I just feel like now we're put in a position where now we're playing the telephone game. I'd rather them hear it straight from you all. So if that can be something you can, you know, briefly speak to at the next Planning Commission, I think it'd be greatly appreciated by the greater community. If not, I can try to schedule or get the group together and maybe have Gabriel go out and meet them at, in their neighborhood and have a conversation or dialogue with them in person. But I, I put that to staff. I just, like I said, I just want to be mindful of the concerns that staff keep bringing up and aren't being addressed.
Thank you. My comment had more to do with something that was brought up at the last council meeting. I didn't attend in person, but I did see the meeting online and there was a, there was a, the budget had been talked about. And so it was mentioned that you, that there was going to be a presentation on the budget and proposed measures that would be taken. And so I wanted to maybe put in a request, and if it's already being addressed, great. But just to see what the budgetary impacts would be on, on, on the planning department. I know we're going to get one at the Parks Commission, too. So I think that would be helpful for us. I know we all have different views on, on the, some of the proposed measures to address the budget deficit that the city is facing. But I think it would be helpful to really see just the different scenarios and how they would affect the work that you all do. And I think personally, I would be interested in seeing how I could be supportive.
Yep. Yeah, so we do have management and they are going around to the different, you know, committees, commissions. And we do have this scheduled for the December 2nd meeting. So during that, that meeting, we will have a presentation to talk about the budget and finances.
I kind of figured, yeah, that would be my request and hope that those things would be addressed, but thank you. And happy holidays and, you know, Thanksgiving for everybody. I know you all, you all deserve it with everything you all do. Speaking to everybody here. Happy Thanksgiving. With that, I guess we'll just adjourn. With that, I guess we'll just adjourn. It is 7:22.